Clerk to take the role.
Trustee Catherine?
Here.
O'Brien Bergwijn?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Whalen?
Way down here.
Thomas Zappa, absent.
Okay. Well, we have a single item agenda for tonight. Mr. Bob Barsness from the Joint Library Board, I guess would be the most appropriate description. Has probably done the best job we're going to be seeing in terms of trying to put together operating and financial perspective associated with a proposed library for the Joint Library Group, which consists of the village, the city, and the two adjoining townships, Town of Hudson and the Town of St. Joe. So I'm just going to leave it at that. And by just give you the floor. And I would suggest, just because our regular television cameras are not working yet. So where would you like by to be, over here?
And there's a microphone there at the end.
Do you want me to sit in that chair, maybe?
That's fine.
For half since Mark isn't here.
Just turn his nameplate down.
Feel free.
Yeah, just turn the chair on the end so everyone can...
Well, thanks for letting us come. The people that have been working on this for a couple of years are Susie Gilbert, Holly Graham, Jeff Zeiss, who is not here, and I don't know if he's coming. Oh, he's out of town, and myself. I am a board member on St. Joe's Town Board. And by virtue of that, I was assigned as the St. Joe representative to the Joint Library Board. And so I heard people, sorry. I heard the board talking about this new library building. And a group had done a really good job, I think, identifying potential sites and had narrowed that down. And you'll recall that there was a lot of buzz a year or so ago as we were talking to the county about a five acre parcel on the corner of Vine and Carmichael. And that really didn't go anywhere because the county board has not yet decided what they're going to do. And, you know, part of me wonders if they'll ever decide what they're going to do. In October, serendipity happened. And a For Sal sign went up on the NMC Building on 701st Avenue, First Street. Evan Street? Street. And we immediately had the broker take us through the building. We brought an architect to help us evaluate its fitness, if you will, for a library. And they involved an engineer. We have architectural drawings of the building. And I remember getting a call, oh, I don't know, third week in October. And it was, well, we got good news and we got bad news. This is from the architect. The good news is your program will fit in that building. The bad news is the floor loads won't take it. And I said, well, geez, there must be something we can do about, you know, changing the stacks around or positioning the stacks or reinforcing, reinforcing the floor, whatever it might be, to deal with floor loads. And sure enough, that was feasible. So within a couple of weeks of that, we drew a preliminary conclusion that this building would work very well for us. And we got some pricing from the architects. And the architectural firm we've been using is BWBR, a very substantial St. Paul firm. They just completed a $20 million renovation of an office building downtown St. Paul for, that's owned by a company that I'm on the board of. So I've had exposure to BWBR and their capabilities. And they've done a number of libraries. And they worked with Paul Puyak from Mattson Johnson to put together the cost budget numbers that you see in the exhibit that's attached. And then, you know, when we were planning on buying some dirt someplace and then raising money, and then when everything is approved and in order, you know, we do the building, that's one timeline. The timeline, when you're trying to capture a building that's on the open market, is controlled by the open market. And so, you know, we can only buy this building if someone else doesn't buy it before us. So we felt we needed to step into high gear. And I have developed a rough series of steps, which is in the material, and I'll spend a minute with that, with you, with that, to explain what it is we're trying to do. Hopefully, you've had a time to look at this color piece. I don't think you could build a library in terms of views and openness and architectural style, you know, any nicer than this building. I mean, it's just, you walk in that building and you say, boy, this would work. Second floor ceiling on the back page is open. I mean, it's just ideal for a library. And the program fits perfectly in the library. A bit about the program. The board, the library board, hired Robert Rolfe and Associates to do a facility requirements study. And he is the former chief librarian for the Minneapolis Public Library and has spent the last number of years in his career being a, really a national consultant on libraries. And he's the one that, based on the, primarily on the population of the, of the four municipalities, and some attention to growth, because a library is something that should last, you know, 50 years at least. He's the one that identified our spacing needs as 31,000 square feet. And there's all kinds of data from the Wisconsin libraries and, and national libraries that show area populations and library size. And what we're talking about fits that data perfectly. So that was what we used. And in this report, Bob came up with, you need X C being the data set, and I see you have that, and a couple of these rooms and stack areas. And so what BWBR did is they took the specs, basically, the needs assessment specs that Rolfe had developed and fitted in this building. And it fits like a glove. So that's kind of where we are on size. The building is, is a perfect size for that. Exhibit B shows you the ground lots we're talking about. The, there's a small sliver on Second Street where there's a small building now that is for sale, but that would have no use for us, so, so that's not part of our interest. You know, maybe someday we could acquire lots two and three and expand the parking. There's 35 stalls behind the building, which will cover the library's need, you know, most of the time. And there's street parking and then parking across the street in the Van Shell parking lot. So there's plenty of parking around, but, you know, someday maybe two and three could be part of this. But that's not part of what we're seeking at the moment. If you go to exhibit C for a second, the, what we're trying to do is to come up with a description of a project, what it is, where it's going to be, what it's going to cost to, you know, to create, how much it's going to cost all of us for financing, both the municipal fin and how we're going to pay for philanthropy and municipal financing, and what the ongoing operating expenses are going to be. We have preliminary numbers, and the preliminary numbers are basically on this sheet that's exhibit D. But what we're trying to do is create a, an actionable budget, if you will, with all the details that are just summarized on exhibit D. Our, our goal right now is to have a summary preliminary document, and that's what I'm reviewing with you tonight. If you look at the bottom half of first page of exhibit C, you can see the steps that we're going to have to try to go through in the next, the most critical time is probably the next 120 days, maybe 150 days. You know, you are seeing step one tonight. I'm reviewing step one with you tonight. And, and, you know, it was presented to you, and that's step two. Everybody agreed to agenda this for the first meeting in February here, the third of the four, the St. Joseph meeting is tomorrow night. And what we're asking for is a non-binding preliminary commitment in concept from each municipal governing body. And then we're also asking for approval of a referent, non-binding referendum question for the April 1 ballot. The deadline for that, to have that all in order, is February 19th. So we, we do have time. And I'll, I'll review that question with you a little bit later. So if the, both the Town of Hudson and the city approved proceeding, you know, in concept, we got you guys tonight and St. Joe tomorrow. And if, if everybody is, is agreeable, then we plan to begin a public communication program on the 15th of February. I understand it already started. It's in the Hudson Star Observer on the front page today with an editorial. I haven't seen it, but Susie has seen it. And, you know, they picked that up from the city council meeting on Monday night. And a favorable...
The editorial that was, the editorial was done by, I'm assuming Doug Stolper. But again, a very favorable editorial done about the library and the need that we have and the great building that would be to be in. So we'll leave to that.
So if, if we're authorized to begin, and this is really a non-binding authorization, because we're not asking you to spend any money to let us, you know, go through the next, basically, 60 days, or 90 days, to put together a complete project description. You're seeing the preliminary stuff. It's going to talk about budget. There'll be better numbers than these. I hope these numbers are high. I believe they're high. But I didn't want to come in low and then come back, you know, in 90 days with higher numbers. So I'm hoping they're high. And so we'll be working with architects and people from the library and other interested parties to help us fit our program into this building so that the contractors, you know, could come up with real numbers based on real things that we're going to want to do in that building, instead of just broad numbers, which they've used thus far. We're going to work very hard on coming up with a fundraising feasibility study. I shouldn't say we're going to work very hard. We're going to have a fundraising feasibility study conducted and completed by April 30th. Whenever one begins a philanthropic fund drive, you often start with professionals who basically come into the community, pre-interview some of the likely big givers and, and other important people in the community to judge whether or not the interest in the project is, is in the minds and hearts of the philanthropists and the amount of money that we're planning to raise could or could not be raised. And in that process, you know, we would identify the lead gifts, I mean, assuming it's positive. So as part of the package, we would bring back to you, you know, in May, we will have a feasibility study. And I assume it's going to be positive. The individual that we're going to use, we have talked to several times. I've worked with him in the past, and he is optimistic that this community will support a project of this size. And as we looked at both the River Falls Library and the Stillwater Library, in each case, half of the cost of those projects was raised philanthropically. Stillwater, just a year and a half or so ago, and River Falls, about 10 or 12 years ago. So there's, there's history in the, in the area for, for significant philanthropic support. We'll come up with much better costs for the demolition and renovation of the building, and we'll develop how we're going to finance it in some detail. We're going to develop, you know, who's going to own the building. St. Joe isn't going to be very interested if the city owns it. You guys probably wouldn't be very interested if the city owns it, if you're contributing, you know, 14% of it. So there are options. The Wisconsin statutes have anticipated intergovernmental cooperation on projects. And so there are several ways that we could structure this. We simply just don't know the best way. And, and then, you know, at some point along the way, the joint library agreement is going to have to be redrafted, because the library agreement now is only intended to allow us to operate the current facility, in the current facility. And it specifically, we're given any capital items, I mean, like a new building. And so we'll have to figure out, once we know what the governance and ownership of that, for that proposal is, then we'll come up with a draft, a new joint library agreement, so everybody knows, you know, how that's going to work. And it might be like a fire commission. It might be a non-stock 501(c)(3) corporation. It might, it could be a district. I mean, there are several options, and we don't have any idea what the best one is. Our goal is to bring you and the other partners a plan that is thorough and reasoned and based as much in fact as it can be, so that when you hear from us with a final proposal, I mean, you don't have to take this and start from scratch. I mean, you obviously will challenge what we did, but, but you don't have to start from scratch. Most of the thoughts will have been, have been developed for you. You know, I wrote down a lot of questions, you know, in the last couple of pages of this exhibit, and some of those, we've got some answers for now, and others we don't. But, I mean, that's just to indicate the kind of thinking that we're going through as we're putting this together. Let's look at exhibit D for a moment. It shows two options. The build new, and that was based on being able to buy some property from the county at Vine and Carmichael. The price is speculative on the land cost, you know, but it was the best estimate we have. The construction cost was prepared by Robert Rolfe and Associates, who uses an architectural firm for, for pricing. And BWBR has, has confirmed that kind of pricing, you know, for a library of that size, I mean, a new, new construction. So it's been corroborated. Furnishings and equipment is a number that came from Rolfe. He, he went through our library and, and imagined what we were going to need on a, in a new library for equipment, moving expenses. Professional fees are the best estimates we can possibly develop at, at this point. Contingencies for inflation, you know, delay in construction and, and the general contingency. And then a collection enhancement. Our current collection is maybe, and Jim would probably know the exact number, but it's in the order of .5 of what it should be for a community our size. And Rolfe's suggestion was that we take it to like a .8. And the cost to get to a .8 is 550,000 bucks, not to get to 1.0. And those are rough, roughly close numbers. So we end up with a project that's nine and a quarter million for the NMC Building and 12.3 million. So 20, you know, 25% less in the existing building. And that, that money is mostly in the, in the hard and soft costs of the building. I assumed we could buy it at somewhat of a discount from the asking price of 3.8. I used 3.4. We'll certainly try and buy it for a lot less than that, but we had to start somewhere. And I said, as I said earlier, I wanted to start with high numbers rather than low numbers. Now, how is this going to get paid for? The first two items in the right-hand column are the, basically, the philanthropy, four and a half million dollars. It's broken into two groups and, and, you know, I'll just say four and a half million bucks. The library currently has funds of about 800,000. Some of that is, about half of that is a result of, of, of impact fees from the village and the city. And the other half is operating surpluses, you know, from the past several years. We believe there is a number of national grants that we could seek. And, you know, the earmark that Ron Kind put us down for 150,000 is an example of that. Of course, two years ago, he put us down for 200,000, and then that went away. We don't know if 150 is going to last or not, but, but that's an example of national funding. We go to the Carnegie Foundation, and, and we're collecting all kinds of listings of organizations that fund various parts of libraries, and we pursue those too. That's different than the local fund drive, which is a four and a half million. And then public funds, 3.4 million. And the next section of this exhibit shows you, if we borrow 3.4 million dollars, 20 years, and the interest rate at the time that I did this calculation, which was probably about a month ago, was 4.25%. So the principal and interest payments for 20 years would be 255,000 dollars. That would be shared...
And that's borrowing how much?
3.4 million. And that is really, so the, the per capita, per year cost is $9.42. We've got about 27,000 residents in this area. So that's what we're spending per year, per capita. Now, you can see how that debt breaks down right below that. The city of Hudson's share would be almost a million and a half. The Town of Hudson, just short of a million. And St. Joe and, and North Hudson, because our populations are nearly identical, would be, you know, 470,000 dollars, you know, plus or minus. And then the annual payment for each of those entities would be, as shown in the parentheses off to the right. And that totals 255, which is the 255 right above. So you can see how that tracks through. The other issue is operating expense. You can see that the actual 2008 operating contributions from each of the partners was 609,000 dollars. We're estimating that the new facility is going to be a million dollars a year to operate. And it's a bigger building. We have operated on the super cheap, because we haven't, you know, had room to do anything more, and it's been a very thrifty operation. And when it gets to a bigger size, it's just going to take more people, and it's going to cost more. So some of it is, we're probably getting by, you know, with that, I don't know, 80% of, of a, of a normal budget. You know, it's, it's very frugal. It's maybe, well, 60% of a normal budget. So the increase, basically, if you look at it, 43% of a million bucks is 430 for the city. They've contributed 254 last year, so their contribution going forward would be an increase per year of 175 grand. And so you can go down the list, and you can see how, how various, you know, municipalities are going to contribute more to this. All of this is allocated on a per capita basis, and then the, the communities distribute that amongst their taxpayers based on assessed value. But the thought was that the municipalities ought to be charged on a per capita basis. And there are annual per capita numbers that I think we can all agree would be appropriate for this going forward. So we'd make an adjustment every year, and then every 10th year, we'd get trued up, you know, more precisely. So that's, that's kind of the budget. 900, 900, 4 million bucks. And you can see what it's comprised of, and you can, you can see your municipality's share of that going forward.
While you're, while you're on that page, I got, I have two questions. I, I didn't quite understand the collection enhancement figure of 550,000 dollars. What is that again?
Books and, and periodicals and CDs and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Any other questions about this?
And let's see. The other thing I had was, if you built new, I'm assuming you would have roughly the same annual operating expense as this new facility.
I believe so. You know, there might have been, this building is like 10 or 12 years old. There might be some energy efficiency in a building that was built today, better than this one.
And I was thinking that, you know, I was thinking that building was built with energy efficiency in mind, wasn't it? Kind of one of the first green buildings.
It was a green building before the term was coined.
I think it was. Wasn't that the Erickson Building?
Yeah, Erickson, Lucidite.
What are you going to do with the basement? Department garage, rather.
The, in the plan, there's 660,000. Let me go through them. We buy the building for 3.4 million at the top of that column on the right-hand side. We've got a million nine for demolition, renovation, and new elevator. The building has an elevator in the back northeast corner. It's totally out of any sightline. So we wouldn't have a clue what's going on in the building, using the elevator. So we need another elevator in the sightline inside the parking lot door, so that an attendant can observe the comings and goings of people. And that's about 140 of that number. The, renovate the lower level. The architects suggested that the garage come out and that it be brought to an office level of finish. And the proposal, their quick numbers were 660,000. The next two numbers are the, the floor reinforcing load, stop 450,000. And again, these are, are very preliminary, but decisionable for the decision we're asking you to make tonight, numbers at this time.
Would you amplify and clarify, elucidate on the word demolition?
Well, there are some offices along the perimeter. There are some conference rooms in the middle of the floor. And, and so those would be, would have no use, or most of them, as I understand them, would have no use in the library, so they'd come out. And then you got to put it back to the finish of what, what was next to it.
Okay.
Reconfiguration would be a better word.
Instead of, I'd find another word other than demolition. Renovation perhaps, or? What'd you say, Jim?
Reconfiguration.
Reconfiguration?
Well, this is a marketing guy, huh?
I thought of that, too.
I'm looking at demolition.
We're still trying to figure out, we're still trying to figure out what a good word for you would be.
There isn't one.
Before you... I'm kind of a building guy. And demolition, renovation, and renovation are, are numbers that I, you know, in the trade, that's what we talk about.
Before we leave this page, how, how much staff increase are you planning for the library?
I'll let Jim answer that question. I've seen the number, but I don't, I don't remember.
How many, how many full-time or full-time equivalents do you have now?
We have 9.9 FTEs. Anticipating, adding three more, it would be one full-time and probably four half-times, which would be the equivalent of two-fold. We rely heavily on part-timers, because the library employees are, back from when it was the city library, are in the city employment structure. And they have a ferocious benefit cost, principally healthcare, so that we minimize the number of full-time people we have. But the real staff requirement is driven by circulation. Circulation needs, volume is the biggest thing that drives staffing needs. And so that the sum increase, and that's projected to 2010, the first full year of operation, 2009 would be a transition year. Even the present facility, we'd probably have to add... Even the present facility would probably have to add some increment in the next two years, driven both by circulation increases and just general inflation.
Okay.
But circulation is the, the biggest-
Yeah.
... of library expenses. And on that subject, the cost per circulation is about two dollars and ten cents. The Wisconsin average is three dollars and thirty-six cents, the last figure I have, which creeps up a little bit each year. We are at two-thirds of the state circulation costs.
I don't know what you mean by circulation, per circulation.
Oh, that's, that's the, the library budget divided by the annual circulation. And that's the cost per circulation, which is a common measure of library efficiencies.
Okay.
So, did I hear you before, Jim, so you'd be adding three, equivalent of three heads?
That is our projection for budget purposes. Now, they would be added incrementally as the need was demonstrated. But I had to project a number for, for what cash and purpose that's represented.
And going forward, would these employees continue to be a part of the village, or being a part of the city of Hudson?
That is the, the, we've not discussed any other plan, put it that way.
We'd like to have them not be, but I, you know how it is, you know, working with, uh, union groups. But there may be something here in creating a new structure where, where we could shed that, I don't know. We haven't worried about that yet.
Now, with respect to starting the library, I mean, I mean, obviously, you don't have the funds. So on the front end, we'd be borrowing nine, eight million?
Well, uh, it's gonna be more than three, four. And we can, we can get a, a construction loan, you know, that would, an interim loan to buy the building and to, to pay for the conversion, reconfiguration. What do we call it? I've already forgotten.
Reconfiguration?
Yeah, reconfiguration. So there will be more than three, four borrowed, and, and one of the issues is, do the municipals have the debt capacity to handle that? And we're gonna have to convince you that if, if we have to borrow, in, in this number, I said seven point four million. I'm not certain how fast the initial collections are gonna, dollars of fundraising raised are gonna come in. My first crack at this was more aggressive than this, and the fundraising consultant said, well, you're too aggressive. So I cut it way back, and I haven't had a chance to, if this is too conservative. I mean, uh, you know, it's too, too negative. But it, it's likely that the authorized amount initially is gonna have to be excessive, or it's gonna have to be somewhere in the seven point four million range.
Just a couple of thoughts on this. I have read over these numbers as soon as I got them. And, uh, what occurred to me was the annual cost. Play out a scenario, and please interrupt me and say, no, you're wrong at any time. Now, I'm going to assume that a referendum were to pass. Am I concerned about that referendum, about the cost to the individual? Yes. But if it's passed on a referendum, uh, that's very different than what I see for the annual operating increase costs. Because for two thousand and eight, we are relegated to a two percent increase in the levy. And when I look at that two percent, and I look at this number here, okay, which staff member are we not gonna be able to keep next year? The detective won't be able to be hired. What other services are we going to have to forego just for the increase in the operating costs? Because these are very significant numbers.
They're bigger numbers than the capital cost. For capital.
Yep.
Yeah, they are.
And so I ask you, how do we, as a village, operating, and, and not, not just the village, but when I look at the, the city, the town of Hudson, the township of Saint Joe, are going to be all facing exactly the same thing as we are?
It would seem to, you know, we'd, we'd, it would seem to me we'd have to have that as part of the referendum too.
I, I think there's gonna be-
Can you put that, can you put annual operating costs into a referendum?
Well, once we have the step increase, you know, to get from the six hundred thousand to a million dollars, let's say, then the increases are gonna be, you know, they're probably gonna be more than two percent, because they've been more than two percent. But they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be huge. They're not gonna be of disorder magnitude.
And just so you know, we, we live and die on a two percent increase each year, and it is, when you guys ask for more, we have to take it from another pocket.
We're expected each year to be able to-
That's just the way it works.
And we're expected to provide a, a living wage increase to all thirteen of our paid employees.
And we have, we have the same kind of problem with healthcare and benefits. It's just, it's going on site.
I'm familiar with it, two, well, three point eight six here, and next year, yeah, that's the- Madison congratulates themselves by putting-
Oh, yeah.
... goals on the budget. Which is a whole other subject, but, but it's how to live with it. Yeah, we recognize that that's a problem that is common among all four units. One way is the, well, the, the capital cost is debt service is outside of levy limits. Depending what Hudson does, maybe to bring that example, but anyway, one way around it is-
Debt service is not outside of our living limits. It's outside of our levy limits, but it's not outside of our capital. It's not, it's outside of our spending limits. We'd have to, we would have to take that to a referendum.
I believe that all communities are gonna have to have a binding referendum.
Well, I think they are too, I mean, we've, we've talked about it.
You know, down the road, if this, if this gets approved. The, the notion of a non-binding referendum basically came from a presentation that I made to Larry and Jack Bro and Teresa Johnson. And, uh, it wasn't Jeff at the time, it was, uh, Bob Waxen. When I talked about this project, oh, I don't know, maybe it was a year and a half ago. It was quite a long time ago. And, uh, there was unanimity that, in order to see what the citizens' interest in this is, we need a non-binding referendum. So that's why we're focusing on, you know, step one of non-binding referendum. Let's hear from the citizens, you know, how important they think this, this is for, for our community. But, you know, going forward, it's, or just to get the project approved, we're probably gonna all have to have binding referendums. Get borrowing on, and/or operating costs, or both. You know, then, going forward, year to year, uh, you know, it's, it's not gonna be any different than it is today. You know, costs are going up, and, and, you know, Madison's gonna have a, a freeze on, on, on us, and we're gonna have to figure out a way to, to live with that, or shut down.
Well, obviously, the freeze issue is set aside to the extent that you have binding, to the extent that residents elect to put in, put in their own increases-
Yeah.
-if they can do that.
Right.
But in terms of, on the front end of, on this project, and just assume for the moment that all the numbers are right. We've got a projected project cost of nine, nine point two, nine point three. The library currently has about eight hundred thousand?
Yes.
Which I'm assuming is the collection of impact fees?
It's impact fees and operating surpluses. It's four hundred and twenty-five of impact fees. Those start being given back to, uh, people that paid them in next, uh, next August.
So if you just subtract those two, that says you got about eight point six? Eight point seven that you'd need to get the building going to do the stuff. There, there aren't any philanthropic or other dollars short-term available. So in the first twelve months, it looks like we're gonna have to probably have somewhere between the seven point four that you referenced before and, you know, eight million anyway.
Yeah, I would guess it's-
To be bonded, to be bonded.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
And depending upon, you know, fundraising, and certainly I'm involved in a particular ones, uh, fundraising project right now, which is small by comparison, and when I look at this, we're trying to raise three million. We've got a million and a half so far, we've been at it for two and a half years, hitting many of the same kind of sources you are. So if it took four to five years, that probably wouldn't surprise me.
For the collections. We think the, the drive, the solicitation is a one-year.
But in terms of, um, you know, you know, just residents understanding the magnitude of, of what this project is costing, if we have to borrow eight million, that says the village has got to borrow a million one. And then you can put whatever interest rate and amortize that. Can you bond for twenty years? I thought that was limited to ten.
No, we can bond to whatever.
No, you can't borrow for, you, it, if you're gonna-
You can bond for twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've talked-
Has to be more than ten.
Yeah, I've talked to the elders, elders and associates people, and, and a bond consul in Milwaukee. And there are ways.
So as I understand it, in terms of, you know, our, we're currently paying seventy thousand a year for operating costs. And that would go up about another seventy. Plus, at least for the first five years, we then add about another hundred, hundred, hundred twenty-five thousand?
Not more than the seventy. The construction loan would probably have, uh, no amortization of principal, it'd be interest only. And that might even compound into the loan. I mean, no payments at all, but the debt would be-
But at some point in time, we've got to start paying that. You're gonna build, and you're gonna wanna move in, and-
Right.
We'll flip it from-
Yeah, but I'm, I'm saying that for the first twelve to eighteen months, there's probably no cash required. That interest would compound into the, into the construction loan.
That would take a loan beyond eight million and potentially get it up to the eight and a half, nine, nine range.
So we're talking about-
I mean, bottom-wise, it's, it's a, it's a big project.
It, yeah.
It's real big.
It is a big project. The, the other issue though is, build new is a bigger project. So, you know, we, we firmly-
Oh, I'm not-
-believe that this is a, an interesting opportunity for this community to capture this building. And worthy of deep and serious consideration.
Well, I don't think there's any question, everyone would agree that, you know, the whole idea, should we do something to the library? How much should it be? And at least for the first time, you know, we've had, you know, somebody's tried to put their arms around that and said, it's around a nine to ten million dollar project. And divide that over the four communities, and that translates to, currently, we pay about seventy, and going forward, it's gonna be about two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five thousand a year for the village.
Well, I hope it won't be that much.
Well.
You know, at the end of the day-
The numbers are there.
It's certainly gonna be a hundred.
Well, we're already at seventy.
No, it's gonna be a hundred and seventy.
And just the operating costs alone are gonna go up, uh, what, thirty-five for the village?
No, they go up seventy.
Seventy.
So a hundred and forty thousand a year.
So we're going from seventy to a hundred and forty there, and then plus whatever the debt service is gonna be.
Yeah.
But you're saying the debt service is like thirty-five?
Yes, that's what-
And there, there, we would, there would be no debt service, and because you've got this construction loan, that's gonna last for how long?
Well, we don't know, but it would be eighteen months, two years.
Yeah.
You know, you have to get to the point where you, you can do the permanent. And in this case, without actually having sat down with a, you know, a bond firm to figure out how we're gonna deal with the collection of, of philanthropic gifts, you know, it might be five years before we get down to the, let's assume it takes five years to, to, to collect all the philanthropies. You know, how, when do you do the permanent loan in that scenario? The bankers are gonna have to tell us how to do that.
You mean, when you do the bond?
Yeah, that would be the permanent. And, and I just don't have the answer now.
Yeah.
You're saying like, if, potentially for the whole first five years? Somebody'd be willing to carry eight million with no repayments?
Well, it doesn't go last that long. You know, we're gonna, we're, we will collect, you know, we'll go to the Anderson Foundation, Fred Anderson Foundation. You know, if they say yes, they write a check that day. And there, there are others who will react quickly. So, you know, I figure we're gonna get two million in a, in a real rush. So that makes the eight goes down to six, you know, uh, from that.
But even if there was no debt, our cost at the village would double. Essentially, yeah, essentially double that.
But I think what you're saying is, we shouldn't see much more than a, a thirty-five plus the seventy, about a hundred and five thousand dollar annual increase in our cost to the, the library.
Right. I mean, we, this is-
If you get it financed and paid for with, with, with everything that you're talking about.
When I come back to talk to you in May, we'll have, we'll be much more certain of, of these numbers.
I, I just had some questions, I guess, regarding the, uh, the language in the referendum itself.
Yes. Did you see the draft seven? What's passed out tonight?
Yeah, I'm in front of me.
No, something could change, but, uh, this has been, as you can tell, since the seventh draft, it's been flying back and forth, you know, for a week. And Catherine Mount-Pitrick, who represents the city and Saint Joe, made the changes that are incorporated in the seventh draft. The earlier draft, the question really brought in, uh, use of public money and any available private funds. Well, we're not asking for approval to use private funds. We're asking for approval to use public funds. So the question ought to just deal with public funds. So the private fund information went down into the explanatory statement. And that's the nature of the changes that were made here. You know, we talked in the last paragraph, we talked about the total project of nine and a half. I, I rounded it up from a nine and a quarter. And then I, I took a two, three hundred thousand dollar house, and, you know, on average, calculated, uh, the increased operating expenses and the debt service, and divided using the assessed valuations that existed on January first, oh seven, because that was the most recent data available, and you come up with these numbers. And it's very important that there be a uniform, uh, question, that everybody asks the same question. We don't get caught in a spot where, well, gee, three of us approve this, and the fourth one approves something a little different, and, and so we're kind of stuck, even though it's non-binding.
What does, so tell me, what does this non-binding referendum do for you, or do for us? Huh?
Survey.
It's a survey.
Okay. Assuming it comes back positive, then what do you do?
Well, then this group, uh, waits until the complete document of the project comes in. You evaluate it, and one of the, you're looking at the costs and where these numbers are gonna come from, and what the citizens said, and then the seven of you make a decision. And in Saint Joe, there's five, and in town of Hudson, there's five, and in the city council, however many they have.
Well.
Joe, what might be missing here is that, uh, we need some sort of authority as we start negotiating for the purchase of this building. Right now, who are we, you know?
Yeah, okay.
And we need, we need the, to let the owners of the building know that there is a, a, uh, group of people out there that want this building. That's part, that's one of the-
Letter of intent or something.
And we don't have time to wait and, and make a binding, uh, referendum, because this building might slip off the market. It buys us the-
Well, we could do a binding now, but we don't know enough. I mean, we just don't have all the answers yet.
Seems to me that this is a, that this, the referendum that you have here is a survey, is, as you're saying, a non-binding referendum. But then, seems to me that we would need a binding referendum when you do get all your numbers together. As you, I know Jim's aware, you know, the village, what, what we have here is any, any expenditure more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars goes before the public to see if we spend it. I can't see that this would be that different. And so when you're, when you've got all the numbers, then you have a binding referendum. Now, my concern comes in, let's just suppose that one of the three says, no, the- Now, my concern comes in, let's just suppose that one of the three says no, the others say yes. That leaves you hanging as well.
But then that's why they probably are doing this upfront work, saying...
Yeah.
We're hoping that, that the survey, because it has costs to the residents in it, in the explanatory, will, will allow the residents to make a, you know, a good survey response. They'll understand it's non-binding. And there may be a change of heart later, I mean, who knows? But, but we're not trying to, to say anything less than, you know, all the, the whole story. If we just said, "Would you like a new library?", and didn't tell them how much it was going to cost, they'd all say yes.
And I think you found that in the North Hudson survey, when, you know, library was at the top of the list and some of those things that, thought that needed to be improved. And so I think that, again, going to, to the non-binding referendum will tell us how the whole community affects and feels. And making sure that we have this support and give us the initiative to move forward and go to the next step.
Let me just follow up on what Holly was just saying. I just want to make sure I understand the sequence of events that would occur. We do a referendum, and we'll assume for the moment that it's more than fifty percent. So that would then at least say that there's at least fifty percent or more of the residents who would agree to spend public funds. So you would then try to initiate discussions with the, the owner of the building?
No, we're going to do that. We're going to use the commitment of the four to put a referendum question on the April ballot as the initial commitment from the partners to proceed with this project. And we're then going to try to, to enter into a contingent purchase agreement to buy the building. And we'll have to put down some kind of a earnest money. And, you know, if the contingencies aren't met, then we get the earnest money back and we go on our merry way.
I'm trying to wrestle with the issue here. I mean, this clearly falls under the issue of a capital project. Okay? Now, we can certainly...
I'll tell you how the town of Hudson did that.
Well, I mean, the town doesn't have, doesn't have an ordinance that controls them like I do. So any capital project over a hundred and fifty thousand requires a vote by the residents. So on the, on the one end, my, you know, we're calling it a survey, we're calling it a, a non-binding referendum, and yet it's being used as collateral. And I, I get very nervous when someone says, "Okay, then, you know, there may require some, some earnest money down."
Not from you. It's not collateral.
If it's a financial commitment, then the village has got to begin binding.
Yeah. No, we're not, we're not asking for earnest money from you guys.
Respond to...
Or, or very honestly, or any other money at this stage. I mean, I really want this out to the residents because that's the only way we're going to collectively deal with this issue.
We've got a big education job ahead of us, which is on April first. And this is, it'll be an education, a publicity, publicity program that will be starting up. And this will be the first step towards educating the public as to... I mean, they generally perceive that libraries and athletics on the map. Put some numbers on it, show just how inadequate it is, and also what this facility would do for library services here. But it's beginning on an education process. And as Vai says, you're not, by approving the referendum, you're not committing to any expenses. You're just committing to exploring it further.
In this survey, in this non-binding referendum, there's quite a bit of detail here about the construction and one may use the word demolition cost. But there's nothing in here, and I think it should be, about the ongoing, about the increase in the ongoing costs.
Yeah, in the last paragraph, it, it talks about, if you read the...
Is that what that seventy-two dollars is?
The current budget estimates assume that half of the present startup costs would be funded by private sources. And the remaining half of the estimated startup cost, plus the operating cost, would be funded by public sources. So it touches on operating costs. Based on current budget estimates, these public funding would result in approximately a seventy-two dollar annual assessment for each home with a tax assessed value of three hundred grand. So it is, it is the municipal funding of, of the three point four million and the increase in operating expenses.
That seems right to me. I did a little figuring before the meeting.
I've done the calculations. I'd be glad to share them.
No, that's, that's close enough for me.
But I just had a question on that, too. With the increased operating cost as part, would that be part of the binding referendum?
Yes.
Can we do that, have operating costs?
You can have a referendum on anything you want.
So we would do that because I don't know... I'm a, I'm still a little fuzzy on it. How, with the two percent levy limit, would we, then we would have the referendum that would also say it's going to cost this much more per year since we can't afford the, with the two percent?
It's a totally appropriate question, that's for sure.
Would that have to be a two-part referendum then?
Or when it gets to be the binding one?
Frankly, we don't know. This will work for the non-binding. We don't know what the next referendum question is yet. We haven't dealt with that.
Well, simplistically, it's going to be, you know, we've got the numbers. Y'all said yes, we continue to proceed. Now we've got the numbers, it's going to be, you know, approximate where it's at today. Or as it states in your letter, it's nine and a half million, okay? On the assumption that we'll raise four and a half million, that translates to seventy-two bucks per year.
No, three point four million. You know, we're using the library funds, national grants, and four and a half million dollars of, of local philanthropy.
But if that doesn't come through, then that seventy-two dollars goes up.
Right. We're taking a chance on whether we can raise that amount of money philanthropically. And our job is to convince ourselves and then you that these, this is realistic.
Yeah, I mean, the difference is here, you, you don't have to convince the seven of us. You have to convince the, the twenty-five or twenty-six hundred voters. Because ultimately, ultimately, at the end of the day, we're going to ask them, you know, how much are you prepared to? What they say it's going to translate to.
As it should be.
It seems to me...
Yeah, exactly, as it should be.
Seems to me a few years ago, a couple of questions along this regard. It seemed to me when the school bond was floated, I think they were talking about, "We need so much capital. We're asking for that as part of the referendum. And oh, by the way, we need another million a year for operating expenses. We need that approved, too." You get to say yes to this one. If you say yes to this one, I think it says, "You got to say yes to this, too." I think. But it, it seemed it was like a two-part question at any rate. Which reminds me, is there anything, you know, we just built this. And it wasn't cheap, but it was, it was, George monitored that and did a good job of that. But we, we just had to float that through a referendum here this last year. And, you know, now this is coming up. The question that I have is, does anybody know what the school system is doing in terms of a bond issue? Are we going to, are the, is the public going to? I hate to overtax the public, let's put it that way mildly. And I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of competition for the tax dollars and the, that are coming to the community, do we have any increases coming from the school that we know of?
My understanding is with the school, with the new elementary school growing up, and they bought an admin building, which took the pressure off the high school, that the school does that for a while. That's my understanding of it.
It hasn't hit the tax roll yet.
Down the way, though, there's a high school coming.
That could be, since they got more room by moving the admin office out of the high school area. That took the pressure off for a while. We, that's a summer issue.
I was just wondering, you know, I could see us asking for money. You know, if this, if this happens to, if we, if we did this and then we got approval for it in April, then it would seem to me the time to go forward with the referendum would be this fall. Would that be right? Would that be a, would be...
I wonder, no later than this fall.
Okay.
You know, the school board, we've resisted having a referendum next Thursday afternoon, like the school board might do. And, because that makes, that irritates people. You know, it might be that the, the timing of this whole project could require something to happen this summer. So we might have to schedule. You know, we'd like to make it be November. You know, can we negotiate a, a contingent purchase offer that's good for that long? I mean, I don't know.
I see, okay.
But it might be that we'd have to have it sooner. And again, we do it uniform, because it's the whole group doing it the same day at the same time.
I had another question, too. Somewhere in here, it talked about the, half of the town of Troy might be interested. Did they want to join this, and why only half the town?
Originally, they were asked to join. And half of that town is oriented toward River Falls, and the other half is oriented toward Hudson.
School districts.
Okay.
Well, it's, I think it's more than, I mean, people, too, the, the residents. And my understanding is that statutorily, you may not bifurcate a town for participation in a joint library. So what, what Ray Knapp said on Monday a week ago, he said he would be willing to, this was, he offered, we didn't ask. He would be willing to put in front of his town a participation based on school district lines. I don't even know if that's legal. But he's willing to ask. And so we will make a presentation to the town of Troy next Thursday. So I don't count on it. It'd be nice if it happened, but let's not count on it.
Well, I, I, when I got this packet, I, I was curious as to, you know, what was happening. But I'll tell you, when I saw the building, I, you know, we've all been by this building. I don't think, you know, I'm, talk positively about your plan here for a second, but location for us is perfect. We couldn't ask for a better location for us. You couldn't ask for a nicer-looking building in the community. I, I think if, if you, everybody raised their hand about what, what is the best-looking building in this area, this would come to the top of the list, I think.
Except for the Vettal.
For this one, I'm sorry. I knew that, I knew that was coming. I'm, I'm the straight guy.
We're going to have you, Joe.
When I did this, this document, though, the building, this building wasn't complete, so I couldn't put that in.
So, and I walked by it late this afternoon, and just looking at it, it is just, you know, you think about, it's got almost the perfect place to park in the back, and just about the right number of places to park. It's, it brings people into the city, into the better part of the city, right next to the Phipps. It's terrific, you know, and if it's, yeah, are you saying, you know, one of the questions I have, it really looks like a huge library to me. I mean, this is huge. I know we don't have much now, but this is huge, folks.
This is just the size we need.
Really?
Yeah, that's just the size we need.
Man. Anyways, it, it's big. And one question I had is, is there, you know, as I was walking by, I thought, maybe we could convert it into offices and rent out some of this place. But I mean, that's obviously up to you guys. But it, it is a, the location is perfect. I think the building is beautiful. What's, you know, sad is that you have to spend as much renovating the place as you do buying it. You know, that remodeling is, is equal, and I'm not surprised. But anyway, I, I like the idea of it. You know, I'm thinking that this isn't a lot to ask for the community, for the people here. I, I don't think it's a lot to ask to get this over what we have.
I think, Joe, I've heard plenty of all the comments that you just gave, and I've heard throughout the community. People have excitement about this. And they ask me all the time, "Where are you at? Where are we at?" And this is really an investment into the future. We're talking about twenty-five years and more.
Well, I'm just thinking, you'll get a lot more North Hudson residents and probably a lot more people in the city coming down to see this facility than you would have out there on Vine and Carmichael, except to go out there maybe when you get your traffic violation or something. Or go to the judge.
Come here.
But, yeah, yeah. But, you know, I like it. It's a lot of dough. But we've certainly been through, you know, these referendums before here. And some of them get approved, some of them don't.
Will, will there be other financial information shared with the public other than what's in this sample ballot? Will the financial statements you showed us, will that be available?
I, I think so. This is what would end up in the paper. The ballot itself just has the question.
Right.
The, the posting or filing has the explanatory statement.
But the educational campaign will, will share the information you've shared with us.
Yeah, I don't know if it's in, going to be in this form. You know, I don't know how many people can understand, you know, this kind of financial presentation.
They need to see the big numbers.
But, but we, we're not trying, we're not going to try to hide it. We try to make it...
Yeah, what I, yeah, what I think is beneficial and what Larry has done when we've had this kind of situation is that last paragraph that you have there, "Everybody wants to know, well, what is it going to cost me?" That, that is really important to have out in front of everybody. So I would encourage you to have something to that effect on, on all your publicity, if not on the referendum itself, I don't know.
It can't be on the question. The question is just that top place. That's all they'll allow. But this, this will be what is posted in the newspaper for the notice. You know, for a while, we were wrestling with the per capita, which is a smaller number. But people can't understand per capita. But they can understand the house. And if you do it based on, on assessed value, then commercial properties are paying taxes, too. So you get those guys into it.
What does Hudson think about taking this off the tax rolls?
Well, that was one of the subjects that they brought up. There's about twelve thousand or fifteen thousand of city taxes on this building. The total tax bill is more than that, but a lot of it is county. And WITC, and I don't know what else. So they, they didn't dwell on it. They, they mentioned it. But they were quick to say, "Yeah, we, we want to see more, go ahead."
I have a question. You talked about the remodeling of the lower level, which is now the private parking garage, bringing that up to a...
Office level.
Would that be an area where you could do a little revenue recapture by leasing out spaces? Like, I know that the, the Hudson, North Hudson Cable Commission has had some problems with their space and would be interested in looking at another space. A few other places like that.
I think it's possible. We didn't want to go into, you know, subdividing this building in our numbers. And then, you know, we can't find a tenant, and then the numbers aren't, you know, they aren't what we thought they are. You know, if, when we get into this, it doesn't make sense to spend six hundred and sixty grand on that basement because we don't need it for program or whatever, then, then we have to decide, okay, if we don't need it for our program, but to put somebody in it, we're going to need to spend some money, can we get them to pay enough rent to finance that conversion? And, and there's so many ifs and what-ifs. And at this point, we just said, "It's going to be all us," and it makes the numbers the worst. And if we can come up with a better solution, we'll try to come up with a better solution.
One thing to talk about, that type of subject, is having an element in this project of a community center, which, meeting rooms, of course, the first thing that's come to mind. But it's, it's been talked about, but not fully explored is what that might entail. And which broadens IPO and creates more public value. So that could play into the, into a renovated basement area. It's just truly to tell... It's just truly to tell that it's one of the things that Ed had brought up.
On that subject, you know, we're, we're struggling for a new name for this that's, that's better than library. And it would have a connotation of a meeting space and an information space. You know, the only word that I've so far been able to come up with is forum, something forum. Because we, we want to program this building to drag people in. Book clubs, you know, nonprofit meetings.
You know, I, I've been in a situation where I've had to find places for my book clubs or writers group. I had a writers group early on. There is nowhere for groups like that to meet in town, other than coffee shop.
We want that to happen here. And hopefully we'll have a coffee shop, so, you know, it's a gathering spot. I mean, it's not a community center, you know, where you get your blood pressure checked and play shuffleboard. But.
Darn. I was really looking forward to the shuffleboard.
The garage would be perfect for shuffleboard.
Glad Sandra asked the question because I was wondering the same thing about the garage and the reason that I asked it before. And all these questions are starting to all tie together. When we talked about part of the renovation and I asked you about the, or you, asked you about the renovation and you talked about, well, they have offices upstairs that they don't need. So we're going to renovate, I'm putting a lot of things together. So we're going to renovate the basement or the garage and put offices down there. And it made me wonder, why would you move offices from the nice, bright, open area and put them down in a garage?
You know, I, I, I don't have a good answer for that. That's what the architects, as they laid the program into the building.
I'm looking at.
The build, the, the lower level as a garage is useless. I mean, we're certainly not going to let our, you know, keep that going to have the library employees have a covered heated parking. I mean, that's not going to happen.
How many spaces are in there?
Twenty.
With the, the offices upstairs, instead of as an office building, offices ring around the outside. Most of that would be opened up for library public space. And others, others rooms, particular rooms, we'll retain as much as we could for work rooms and meeting rooms for library staff. And we're just, if you ever look in the work rooms we have in the library now, it would make the old village hall look good. We are so totally inadequate.
We're sorry.
And so some of them are against the library use. The other, the ones that are opened up will be for public library use. Reading rooms, work tables, computers and all this stuff that the public would be using. So the upstairs rooms would not be ever in rental situation.
The offices that exist are, a number of them are executive offices. And if we had the junior assistant librarian in a, you know, 300 square foot wood paneled office, we'd be called a question.
The reason I'm raising some of these is I think these are the kinds of questions that the public is going to be asking you. And so I'm using, taking opportunity of this forum so that you can respond to them. But I will say, my biggest concern, and I, I know my colleagues are sharing the concern, is that doubling the annual cost to us for the, I mean, I'm looking at $140,000 a year. Our portion of this annual, and that, I don't know how we would be able to afford that. Somebody's going to have to show me in black and white, and that someone is sitting to my right, who's also questioning the same thing, how we would be able to afford that, given our village budget.
I, I think we have to put it on a referendum, ask for that kind of an increase on an annual basis and give us a new base.
I mean, the answer is there, there is no way on the planet that we're, that we have it within the budget or even if we elected to deplete the undesignated reserves in, in the general fund, still wouldn't be enough.
Well, after two or three years, those undesignated funds would be in the, in the red.
That's what he's saying.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, there, there will be new taxes, period, in the magnitude of six to eight percent, just for this project.
And that's why that, that has to be part of the referendum as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
So is, is your purpose tonight that you want us to authorize you to put this referendum question on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So and I, just in the interest of time, unless there's anyone else who's got any new, I'll make a motion says the village board authorizes the joint library board to put the above ref, the above, the above referendum question on the April 2008 ballot.
Comment? I think you are putting it on, we're not putting it on. You are putting it on as a partner in this, in this project.
All right, I, I got, okay.
We're not putting it on you, you are.
Okay, so the village board is authorizing the above
Non-binding referendum.
Above non-binding
On the April 1st ballot.
Referendum question on the April, and what's the date again?
April 1st.
Larry, why not just word it so that it has the exact title as is on the top here? Uniform Advisory Referendum on Joint Public Library.
Yeah, okay, so, let's see.
I'm talking about for your motion.
Yeah. So it'd be the village board is authorizing placement of the uniform advisory referendum question?
It's a question. Non-binding referendum question.
Yeah, that's not, unless I'm not seeing, I'm not translating that into a sentence, that's all. So we're authorizing, putting the uniform advisory referendum question on the April ballot. On the April 1, 2008 ballot. We already got half of it in there.
What do you got, Kathy?
Kathy, you want to read, yeah, read that back to us.
Not to put you on the spot or anything, but hey.
Well, it would be about three different ways.
Since there's no second.
The village board is authorizing the placement of the uniform advisory referendum question on the April 1st ballot.
Okay, from, 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 okay, is it, should it be from the joint public library board?
On the joint public library.
Okay, on the joint public library. Okay. You want to finish reading?
Okay, so what I have is the village board is authorizing the placement of the uniform advisory referendum question on the joint public library on the April 1st ballot.
It's probably regarding the joint public library on the April 1st ballot.
2008.
2008. Might this have to be a resolution rather than a motion?
I think referendums do come through as resolutions. I do not have.
I, I don't, I don't. And it, it's possible that somebody's going to find something that on this that needs to be changed yet. It should go to your attorney tomorrow morning for comments. The Baki Norman firm has gotten every version along the way and sometimes I get a response and sometimes I don't. And the Rodley firm who represents St. Joe and the city, I know they're comfortable with it because they have been proactive in, in writing and modifying, changing.
Do we really want to engage our attorneys at our expense to put that on if it's already? What I'm concerned with is what you said very early on, is that they all have to be exactly the same wording. We can't have our attorney come back and say, I think you ought to change this, this, this.
Well, then we put all the attorneys together and close the door.
Yeah. And now it's a $12 million project.
Isn't that what's called a cage fight?
Non-binding is, is much easier than binding.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a matter of making sure it's understandable to the average person.
We're, we're just saying, we, we could turn this into a resolution. Did Hudson use a resolution?
They, they did not, but they know they're going to have to meet again because there's already been a new version of this.
Other than this?
They, they operated on the 5th draft.
Oh, okay.
So that's what we had on Monday night, now it's a 7th.
I mean, we, we have a motion, we have a second, but we can modify. All we have to do is modify a little bit of the language on the front end. She's just going to go out and get what would be the resolution number. We don't, we don't have the typical form, so it'll read to the effect of, the board adopts resolution XYZ. But just while we're waiting here, I would, my only summary comments would be, it certainly is an outstanding project. I'm very pleased to see some of the additional capabilities that the, that it would bring in terms of just being a library and the concept of, is it, is it as much a, a learning center as it is an information distribution point as well as offering other reasons?
Exchange, well, exchange center too.
And it is appropriate that it should go to the taxpayers because it is going to be expensive. And potentially twice the number here if you're successful in your fundraising.
Yeah, well, you know, if we, if we get bad news from the fundraising consultant, then I suspect the project will fail. But that's a decision that everybody's going to have to make if that happens.
Problem is you're going to be that far down the road already. I mean, but between now and the end of the year, you're going to, you're going to expect us to say, we're going to have to be putting it back on the referendum says we want to go. We got a deal and we can build a sucker and let's get going. So give me nine, give me nine million bucks.
I think the stability study for the philanthropy though, Larry, the, the consultant comes in head on. He'll have plenty of information to let us know whether we're going to be successful or not.
I've been down there.
Before that start, so we'll have.
And, and like, like you, we've, we've both been down that road before. This one does have some additional funding sources. There's two that I've been associated with somewhat of this scale have not had a good use, so that's advantageous. I have no idea what that means in this economy because it changes environment.
So that's moving in our favor.
And I thought I'd have this.
It costs less, people will want to work. But, you know, people will feel less able to pay for it.
Well.
But I still think it's a good question to ask the community.
It's an appropriate question.
Yep, absolutely.
They can say, we like the idea, we like 75% of it or three quarters of it, I mean.
And you know, I'm, I'm kind of glad we have these referendum processes because then, you know, some community or group of communities just can't go arbitrarily and say, oh, you know, we're going to go build this and, oh, by the way, you know, this way it's, oh, it's out in front. Everybody knows about it, they know what the costs are. And, you know, other people will be watching you guys like a hawk while you're, while you're getting it built, you know? And that's, that's good use and of public financing and, and public monies, I think.
I think it's a really intriguing idea. And this building has always been just fantastic looking and then just the possibilities of the programs, the reading programs and the community programs that could be put on are just fantastic. I'm scared by the numbers frankly though, but I, I want to hear what people would say about it. You know, if they're willing to pony up their own dollars for it.
We, we can correct it. We're, we'll, we'll, we probably can't do a resolution.
Could you do, notice?
Well, you, you indicated that, you know, this, the language in this could change. So the language, if, if we did a resolution, it would have to incorporate the language on the referendum question. If that were to change, we'd have to meet again, do a resolution.
And it's not on the agenda, so.
As a, as a resolution.
That's right.
Well, the town of Hudson did a motion last night, so, you know, everybody may have to sue us a little bit before the majority.
Did we vote on this yet?
This does say resolution.
Okay, we did get a second from Sandra.
It says.
It says resolution.
Resolution to put non-binding referendum on a, puts on the agenda for a night.
It is, but I didn't type it because I thought everything was coming from you guys.
Where'd this come from?
From.
That was what I.
Originally, there was a draft, there was a draft resolution, I think, attached with, to the materials.
Right.
But, but there isn't one that, that would be valid.
You're saying we legally can't do this tonight? We would have to do it, let's say next week?
No, we could draft, we could do a resolution. We could, we could create one tonight and, and adopt it, yes, we could. But what I was saying is this language might change in the next day or two slightly, okay? In which case we'd have to come back and draft it, do another, another one anyway.
Right.
Can we just leave it with the motion and then if we decide, when we find out the final filing, we should come back and do a quick?
What I'm hearing is both the city and the two, and the towns both just passed motions, not resolutions. And it's also non-binding. Now, if this was, you want to spend $20 million, and it's binding, then, then we would definitely have a resolution. So I think we're all right.
By making, by making that motion and second approving it, then the next board meeting, I could have a resolution ready. And that would be the next step in it.
Would there be any reason the group wouldn't approve the resolution that came from, from this motion?
I'm trying to remember the language that they used last night at the town. They made the motion to approve the non-binding referendum be put on the ballot. And then what language they used in between, they said that they may have to have another meeting to review the language should it change. A special meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is exactly.
Right.
I'm going to ask you to reread the, the motion.
The village board is authorizing, excuse me, the village board is authorizing the placement of the uniform advisory non-binding referendum question regarding the joint public library on the April 1st, 2008 ballot.
Okay, and that is referring to this question only? To the extent that anything changes in that question, then this board would have to act again. All right, all right. All in favor of the motion? Any, any further discussion first?
Do we need a roll call vote because this is a, I'm not sure if this is a resolution.
Yeah, I was just thinking that same thing.
I think just to be on the safe side.
We'll do a roll call.
Let's do a roll.
But any comments? Any other comments? If not, um.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
No, you, Joe.
Yes, yes. Three times yes, yeah. Ask me tomorrow, it'd be a yes.
I missed a direction with a finger, Larry.
I can ask one other, for one other item.
You're not on the agenda.
I would ask that you acknowledge that the foundation will be attempting to negotiate a non-binding contingent purchase agreement on the building. That process will start probably next week if St. Joe votes like the others have voted. So we can tie the building up. You know, originally I thought we needed to modify the joint library agreement, but, but the, the town of Hudson said, no, we don't need to do that. We know that you're independent, so.
Yeah.
Non-binding contingent purchase agreement. We're going to attempt to negotiate one.
That's not on the agenda. I was joking before, now I'm not.
Do we have to approve it or just acknowledge?
Well, can number two cover it?
Just to acknowledge that, we don't want to be accused of being a bad faith here. We have to tie the building up.
Well, I had asked, I had asked you before, in terms of the sequence of events, that first you're going to get a binding, first you're going to get some incentive as to where people come out and then, and then you would proceed to start negotiation. You said, no, you're going to start before that.
Right.
Okay, so that's already part of the public record.
Okay, that's fine.
And you also said, you know, that, that process will not commit the village to any funds.
Right.
So that's part of the public record.
Okay.
So I'm comfortable with that.
All right. So are we?
All right.
Thank you for your time. This was an exciting project. I hope we can, can get it done.
Whether it, this one flies, whether it flies, you know, with one leg or two or whatever, I, I commend everyone who has put, put that has, has done the work necessary even to bring this thing together. It's a lot of work and I know Vi has done an awful lot.
I've had good assistance from Susie and Ali and Jeff Seis. Last night, we left the Town of Hudson meeting. This is the wall we were scaling on the project before they voted yes. And now this is the, the friction wall we're scaling.
I think it's, it'll be a beautiful building, or it is a beautiful building.
Chair entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Vi moved that we adjourn.
Second.
Being adjourned, 7:30.
Thank you again. Vi, are you gonna be the guy that's gonna